So I'll call the meeting of the planning commission to order. And before we do the roll call, I'd, I'd like to introduce Mark Long, who is our newest planning commissioner. So tonight's his first night and you'll be under fire tonight. So good to, good to have you with us. So then we'll have the roll call, please.
Pat Dorr.
Here.
Deion Jones.
Here.
Janice Lewis.
Here.
Mark Long.
Here.
Diane Singer.
Here.
Donnie Singh. Steve Stratten.
Okay, you've, you've received in your package the minutes of the June tenth, twenty twenty five meeting. Are there any corrections or additions needed to the minutes? If not, do we have a motion to approve these minutes?
I make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Singer to approve the June tenth, twenty twenty five minutes. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
All right, we have a, we have a second by Mr. Jones. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the minutes have been approved. Uh, the first item is a consent agenda item. It's uh, an item that's considered routine or non-controversial in nature that does not warrant a full staff presentation or board discussion. Uh, I will read the consent agenda and if anyone wishes to have the full presentation, we will do so. If not, we will vote directly on the consent agenda. It's an application for the first revision of final plat of lot one and lot two of Dancing Oaks Plan Commercial Development Subdivision submitted by Byron Houston, Houston Engineering, on behalf of John H. White et al. property owner. The request is to add a stormwater easement to the existing previously recorded plat. The subject property is on C four plan commercial district and is located on the east side of Hacks Crossroads, just north of Progress Way. Is there anyone that wishes to have a full presentation on this? If not, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We have a motion by Mr. Jones to approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, we have a second by Mr. Long. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the consent agenda is approved. Uh, items number one and items number two on the old business has been redrawn by the applicant, so we will not even present this at, uh, at the meeting tonight. And that gets us to item number three. It's an application for a final plat for area nine of Robinson Crossing Commercial Subdivision submitted by Byron Houston, Houston Engineering, on behalf of property owners Pleasant Hill Land and Development Company, Eek. The request is subdivided five point seven two plus or minus acres into um, three, is two, it's supposed to be two commercial lots, isn't it? Two commercial lots rather than three. The subject property is on PUD Plan Unit Development is located at the southeast corner of Malone Road North and Church Road East. And this was tabled to this date at the meeting of June tenth, twenty twenty five. And we'll now have the uh, presentation, staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We apologize for not updating that element on the agenda. Actually, as you did mention, there are two lots and not three. For the benefits of those who might not have been here at the last meeting and for Mr. Long, the new planning commissioner, I will quickly go through kind of the background on this application and then focus on what is new and really in front of you for consideration today. So this was initially submitted last month. This is for a piece of property that is at the southeast corner of the intersection of Church Road East and Malone Road North in the Robinson Crossing subdivision. You have the residential area to the south and this particular corner in the project text was allocated as C four for commercial development. At last month's meeting, the applicant suggested a three lot division of the property as shown on this drawing area view. Lot one was two point one eight acre, lot two, one point six five, lot three, one point eight nine. These gray areas indicate what were proposed as a cross access easements to service those lots. At the rear, this area in blue, that was a stormwater management area regional in nature, which means it's intended to service all the three lots. The area in green, that is a buffer, twenty feet wide buffer as was required in the project text. The intent, which is really why is this application in front of the planning commission? Why is the property owner bringing it in front of you uh, for subdivision of the property at this time? There is a potential buyer, was a potential buyer of lot two for a car wash and lot one for a convenience store with fuel pumps. Under current city regulations, for you to be able to get any building permits, to put up any building on uh, on platted property in the city, you have to first platter the property and record the plat. So that is why it was brought before you. This is the plat as it was considered at last month's meeting. The project text for Robinson Crossing approved by the county back in two thousand and four. And then the whole of that subdivision or that PUD annexed into the city in twenty twenty one, that is entire two hundred and thirty one acre was annexed into the city in twenty twenty one. It had multiple areas. The area that is of concern to us is this area nine, five point seven two acre in size total. That project text specifies that convenience stores and car wash as an accessory use to the convenience store are permitted by right in this particular area nine. What this means, this is very important, is the application before you is for the subdivision plat. It's not for the rezoning of the property. It's not about the use. The use of that particular area is dictated by the list of permitted uses in the project text. That is not what is before you for consideration. So the planning commission or the board of admin, you only get to answer the question that the applicant asks, basically, instead of chasing rabbit trails here and there. So what is before us is subdivision plat, division of the lots, not about the use. These uses are specified in the project text. So if the applicant is proposing or intends to use this particular area for a car wash or convenience store, it's important for the applicant to know that the city changed regulations regarding convenience store with gas pumps back in twenty, November of twenty twenty two, requiring that there be conditional use permit. However, for project text, it was open back then to whatever is allowed in the project text. At the beginning of this year, in December of last year, December seventeen, twenty twenty four, the city updated those particular regulations, making convenience store with fuel pumps in plant development subject to conditional use permit, but also granting vested, vested rights to projects that were already, uh, what were called projects, which basically those particular developments that were already under review or at various stages of review. Under those vested right provisions, there are certain steps that the applicant must meet in order to remain vested, to do the gas station that they want to proceed. A preliminary plat must be approved by June third, year twenty twenty five. Under the subdivision regulations of the city, the master outline in the project text for PUDs qualifies as a preliminary plat. So the next critical deadline is a final plat. It must be approved and recorded by September third, year twenty twenty five in order for the project to remain vested. That's why this application is before you now, because the developer or the property owner is trying to meet that September third, year twenty twenty five deadline. After that, the other deadlines that is still to meet, the civil plan must be approved by the end of this year. Building permits must be pulled by end of March next year and any construction must be completed by December thirty first, twenty twenty seven to remain vested for a convenience store with gas pumps. As I did indicate, the project text has some very generic statements, conceptual statements with respect to, you know, all these drawings, like you always have for, for PDs. Usually you have these, these drawings that are preliminary development plans. They are conceptual, they give you a vision of what the applicant, you know, intends this area to look like. And it will have some general language that allows for the various degrees of flexibility. This project text preliminary development plan also included three driveways going out to Church Road, one coming out on Malone Road. Uh, it was conceptualized for two lots, smaller lots. Two lots are joining at the intersection of Malone Road and Church Road and a larger lot kind of rubbing to the south and to the east of those two smaller lots. Conceptually, at the time, back in two thousand and four, it had this large uh, shopping center, you know, because retail is permitted by right in this particular PD, in this area. So you had this large shopping center that was uh, proposed here. One of the things to note is you did, you had nothing in that particular area for stormwater management back in the county at the time. You know, there was nothing for stormwater management, but that is required today. So the scope of review before you, as I did mention, is not about the specific potential use of the lot. It's not about a convenience store with fuel pumps or gas or car wash. That's not what it's up for, let's say, debate or discussion. Uh, the future land use of the proposed lots pursuant to approved zoning therefore cannot be the basis to deny the subdivision of this property. Subdivision plat really address two main things which are up before the board for consideration, two principal things. The first is how those lots are partitioned. If you have a building on it, for example, if there are a building on that property, does that building meet the new setbacks that the new lot lines are creating? So do you have minimum lot area where minimum lot area are required? If you're in an ARO district, for example, minimum lot size is one acre. If you propose a lot that is half an acre, then the subdivision plat cannot be approved. It's not partitioned properly, so to speak. And then the second thing is whether utilities are available and sufficient to service the lots that are proposed. These are really the two things that are the heart of subdivision applications. If you propose a subdivision to develop, let's say, a commercial development and there is no water in that area, there's no seawall in that area, then the city will have a hard time approving that because you don't have the infrastructure to service it. Or if you propose streets that are too narrow to service a large warmer, you know, then the city would not approve that. So it's really about how the lots are petitioned and the availability of the infrastructure to service those particular developments. The bulk requirements point the city to the outline plan that is proposed or presented in the project text for the development. As I did indicate, it suggests that three lots generally out in that particular area. One above zero point four acres and then the large one was four point nine two acres. Those are general vision, conceptual. This is what was proposed back in twenty, uh, back last month that you took a, a look at. With respect to architectural elements, if it proceeds to construction or the building, uh, and building design, the project text specifies that the applicant will have to provide CC arrows for review and approval. You know, any single family residential parts of the development that have been developed, they have their own CC arrows to promote high quality development in there. So those ones are recorded. The twenty feet buffer is required between any commercial and residential development in the Robinson Crossing commercial area, this particular area, as shown here in plate two. Basically, what was required by the county then, which is enforceable today by the city, is twenty feet wide buffer with a six feet high fence, and it's, and it's a wooden fence with brick column. That's, that's really all the county did require, six feet high wood fence with brick columns. That is what was proposed there. And then you have those evergreens that are staggered. That's what the county approved. The application before you, at the end of last month's meeting, the property owner did state his intention to build, have this car wash and convenience store on separate lots. And we interpreted that to mean, under the zoning ordinance, an accessory use and the principal use have to be on the same lot. You cannot have them on separate lots. If they're on separate lot, then they are principal, on their own lot. One is not accessory. That then caused the applicant to request that this be tabled for him to revise a plat from a three lot to a two lot subdivision with the intention of putting these two uses on one lot. So the application before you today is not for a three lot subdivision that you had last month, but for a two lot subdivision, lot one and lot two. Lot two wraps around lot one, same kind of general intent that you had, or vision that you had in the master layout plan. In that master layout plan, you had a building that extended throughout all of these areas, conceptualized back then in two thousand and four. Didn't account for stormwater management. In this development, that stormwater management is being provided, you know, in this layout plan. So your lot one is two point six zero acres and lot two is three point one two acres. These areas in gray are cross access easements that can be used by both owners of lot one and owner, uh, by, both owners of lot one and two. That cross access easement also extends to the stormwater management area, giving each of them rights to access that detention pond behind it for maintenance purposes as may be necessary. The buffer area, as was required in the project text, is maintained in this particular design. What you really have conceptually, if you compare the conceptual design to what is being proposed to you today, it looks like this, basically. This will be your lot one, proposed lot one, and this will be the proposed lot two. So conceptually, that is what, what you have. The subdivision regulations require that a plat should, all plats in the city are required to comply with the subdivision regulations in order to be approved. If a plat does not meet subdivision regulations, it cannot be approved. For plan unit development, approved master plans, outlines, subdivision regulations say they constitute sufficient preliminary plat approval, once they approved. The final plat should conform substantially with the preliminary plat. That's what the subdivision regulations say. There has to be substantial conformity with the preliminary plat. The basic purpose of a PUD, as stipulated in the subdivision regulations of the city, is to allow flexibility in the development of the plant, of plant communities. So the subdivision regulations of the city recognize the fact that when dealing with PUDs, there will be elements of flexibility. That is just the nature of PDs. Otherwise, there would not be PDs. So the real question before the planning commission is, does the two lot plat substantially conform to the preliminary plat? That's really the question before the planning commission. Does it substantially conform? This whole word conform can be construed in various ways. There are people that look at it very strictly as exact, but that is not really what it is in the development world or in the zoning world. You know, to construe it very narrowly as it has to be exact. I don't know of any plat in this city that would have gone from a preliminary to final and everything is exact. Even in residential developments, when you approve a preliminary plat and then they go and they construct the roads, the infrastructure, they lay the seawall lines, you always have certain adjustments here and there before you get to the final plat. That is general. A key element in determining substantial conformity is legality. If that plat meets the law, then it substantially conforms. That is the first point to look at. Is it legal? Is what is being presented in front of me, does it meet the law? If it is legal, then it substantially conforms. You can forget about every other thing, every other factor. Legality is the key, is the main element. And in looking at lot sizes, because really what is being proposed before you here can be looked at as a change in lot size. In looking at lot sizes, the key place you look for in any project text or even in the zoning code, is in what are called bulk requirements. That's where setbacks, lot, minimum lot size, all of that language is present. The bulk requirements for the Robinson Crossing project text, it says areas are designated with a reference district, refer, referring to zoning districts in the Desoto County zoning regulations. So this particular area, for example, is, this is area nine and its reference in the Desoto County zoning regulations is the C four zoning district. And the project text says the minimum lot area, the minimum lot size in this area nine shall be as defined in the zoning regulations of Desoto County as applicable to the reference district for the particular passer in question. So how small any lot in this area nine has to be, would be as dictated by the C four zoning district in the Desoto County zoning regulations. This is what is legally stipulated in the project text. And if we go to the C, to the Desoto County zoning regulations, what it says with respect to C four, it says the minimum lot area within development has to be twenty thousand square feet. There is no maximum lot area. So insofar as a lot meets the minimum twenty thousand requirement, illegally conforms. Illegally conforms. If it is proposed to be nineteen thousand square feet, it does not. It will have to be denied. If it is above twenty thousand square feet, it legally conforms. The second element is how have we interpreted this conformity, substantial conformity in the city? Has it been exact or has there been a wiggle room, you know, for certain changes to be made? Take it into consideration the fact that the basic purpose of a PUD is to allow flexibility in the development of planned communities. An example is for the C four property area is the Acry PD. This is the project text preliminary development plan as was proposed. If you look at these two lots here, lot three, one point three seven acres, lot two, one point one zero acres. If you look at what was finally approved in the subdivision plat, that area is two point six nine acres. It's far larger, much larger than the lots you have there. So there's always been as far as cities' interpretation of that element of conformity when it comes to PDs, a transition from preliminary plat to final plat, there is an element of flexibility. The same applies if you look at Fair Heaven PUD. This is a C four prop area. This is opposite Flying Jean. This one point five acres, one point five acres, two acres, two acres, two acres. If you go to the current final plat that is approved, that is a two point two three acres in an area that is was, that was conceptualized to be one point five. And all of these were approved without going back and changing zoning codes and so on and so forth. So this is how the city has historically interpreted this element of substantial conformity. Staff proposes three motions before the planning commission for consideration. Should the planning commission find that the plat reasonably conforms to the Robinson Crossing PUD as two thousand and six outlined, then it may approve this particular subdivision plat subject to these conditions one to six. Condition number two requires a provision of those CC arrows uh, before the plat is recorded. If you determine that it does not substantially conform, then you can recommend denier of this particular plat to the board of zoning, to the board of admin. You can further recommend that any amendment that the applicant, this denier, you can recommend that the applicant submit an amendment to the project text to come concurrently with the subdivision plat. Or you can table this item with directions to the applicant to be heard again at the next meeting. Those are basically the three recommendations, motion recommendations before the planning commission. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any questions, the staff?
Uh, just a couple of questions, well, just maybe mainly one. The examples that you gave on the changes to, uh, on the changes, what was the time, timeframe between the initial approval and the, the change?
Most of these are within, like Acry, I think Acry was approved like twenty nineteen and then the, the subdivision plat, the project text, I think it was twenty nineteen. And then this subdivision plat, we just approved them last year. So if you're looking at about five years or so. A Fair Heaven was three years timeframe. This one has been out there for almost twenty years plus.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No further questions. Is there someone here to represent the application?
Byron Houston and Houston Engineering, PO Box thirty eighty seven, Oxford, Mississippi, three eight six five five. Uh, appreciate y'all's time and uh, looking at this. Uh, we believe that we conform to the uh, to the PUD and uh, we would appreciate y'all's approval. And I believe right now there's some works in, there's some behind the scenes works to maybe modify the plan to where we don't, there's, the uh, the C store would be ten years down the road and we may come back to get this additional subdivision or something like that. But um, right now we appreciate the approval and then we'll move forward with uh, trying to work things out to possibly amend in the text.
Any, any questions? No questions and thank you.
Sorry.
No, no further questions.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you so much. All right, this is a plat, it's not normally required to have a public hearing, but we'll have a public discussion. If we could only have one representative from the homeowners of Robinson Crossing, is there there someone that wishes to come up and speak for or against this application? Once again, we're just gonna limit it to one person. If not, then public discussion is closed, and I will entertain to the commissioners any further discussion or motions or comments they wish to make at this time.
I make a motion. Since the final plat reasonably conforms to the Robinson Crossing PUD of two thousand and four outline plan and other aspects of PUD's map series and project text, I recommend to the Board of Aldermen approve the application with conditions one through six.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion by Mr. Jones to approve the application, subject to the staff conditions and one, items one through six. Do we have a second on this?
Second.
Or we have a second by Ms. Lewis? Any further discussion, any other comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the motion carries and the application is approved. Item number four under Old Business is an application for preliminary plat for Highland Lake subdivision submitted by Nick Croon and Civil Inc. on behalf of property owner Brian Cashin, FSB and Company LLC. The request is to create twenty residential lots and two common open spaces from six point nine four plus or minus acres. The subject property is on R three planned residential district and is on the west side of Highway three oh five, just north of College Road, known as forty-two twenty-five Highway three oh five. And this was tabled to this date at the meeting of June tenth, twenty twenty-five, when I had the staff presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. To bring you where we are here, again, as you did mention, on the west side of three oh five, north of College Road, before Cedar Creek Drive, this adjoins Old River Farm. The proposed single-family residential subdivision is to consist of twenty single-family lots with two common open spaces. As you hit on, the site will be constructed in one phase as proposed by the developer. Currently, the property is zoned R three, a planned residential district. The developer proposes a new public street with the main entrance off of three oh five, where my cursor is, and interconnectivity through the west, we'll go through here, and we'll find Highland Drive. The subdivision would not be gated as proposed and approved in the Highland Lake project text. The plat generally aligns with the approved project text and the subdivision regulations of the city. Staff recommends approval, subject to various conditions. As we just talked about, the subject property is zoned R three planned residential district. The project text approved by the Board of Aldermen was on April fifth, twenty twenty-two, established the zoning regulatory provisions of the property. The permitted uses are mainly single-family residential. The bulk requirements shall be stipulated in the approved applicable project text. The submitted plat does not violate any of the such requirements. The smallest buildable lot, as you see within your packet, is five thousand, or yeah, five thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven square feet. The largest, as you'll find, is ten thousand ninety-four square feet. We've also got two land areas here noted in the middle of the plat. These are your two common open spaces. If you'll notice here, as the arrows did show, we've got some conditions at the end, and I wanted to note this, that this red line joining the blue line is a trail network that is proposed within the project text and was approved by the Board of Aldermen. And also that the condition number two, this was agreed to in a meeting, the developer shall construct a six-foot-tall cedar fence along the northern boundary, that'd be this boundary here, and it also bounds common open space twenty-two, which is this one here, and lots ten through fifteen for Highland Lake subdivision to be built at the time Also, as you note on your packets, I did give you a list of exhibits, starting with the aerial map through the preliminary plat. What I did add to that exhibit is a letter of opposition. This is a letter of opposition from a Mark Matthews. He has a interest in Old River Farm. This letter of opposition outlines a private agreement between two individuals that was brought to the attention to the city. What the city did is provide that to you. As I mentioned, it can be noted that this was brought to your attention. Please read through it. Again, we want to note that this is between the individuals, and it's about these proposed streets. So this proposed street, which again, we can go back here, this is Highland Drive, would be an extension of the existing Highland Drive, so that's coming off of Old River Farm. It need a fifty-foot right-of-way to be dedicated in public, to the public in the future. So this section of Highland Drive should be constructed with curb gutter sidewalks and a pavement width of thirty feet face to face of the curb. The pavement width of the existing Highland Drive, again, just want to keep bringing this to your attention, where it's at here, it's off, it's off of Old River Farm, so Highland Drive is part of this Olivia Circle East, and take a, take a right and go east on Highland Drive. The pavement width of the existing section of Highland Drive, as noted here in my, my photo, is only nineteen foot face to face of the curb because it was intended to be a one-way street. This new plan for the Highland Lake subdivision would be public infrastructure, so this would be a public right-of-way. With the current proposal for this road to become a two-way street, the developer of Highland Lake would need to widen the existing pavement of this road to a pavement width of thirty feet. The proposed street will meet the public street standard for local street types. So again, off of three oh five, this is running north and south, you would take a right-in, right-out entrance here. As you took a right, if you're going south, you could take an immediate right into your Highland Drive. That is proposed thirty-foot-wide pavement width for your public street, taking you all the way over here to the west side, if you'll follow my cursor, Lot One. This is the existing pavement here, as you'll note. This car here is actually on three oh, this car here is, this is three oh five, this is Highland Drive. So utilities are in the area, of course, they just went through Old River Farm, we went down three oh five. Utilities will need to be extended across either road of the subject property. The developer would be responsible for the said extensions. Full set of construction plans shall be due to the city engineer and planning staff for review. So our next steps, upon recommendation by the planning commission, a preliminary plat will be presented to the Board of Aldermen for approval. City regulations allow the subdivider, with the approval, with the approval for the construction plans by the engineer, to proceed to construction of subdivision infrastructure. Of course, the final plat would be needed and to be approved by the planning commission and Board of Aldermen, to be recorded before building permits would be issued on any lot. So on to our recommendation, again, we, we recommend approval of the preliminary plat and would recommend the same to Board of Aldermen, following these fourteen conditions. As I said, I'd like to bring to your attention number two. This was an agreement that the owner gave to city staff, that he would develop, construct a six-foot-tall cedar fence on the northern boundary of common open space twenty-two and lots ten through fifteen for Highland Lake subdivision at the time of infrastructure. And number six, a trail network as proposed in the approved project text, a trail network shall be constructed in the common open spaces as required and approved in the project text preliminary development plan for Highland Lake subdivision. That concludes staff presentation. Happy to take your questions, please.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, the staff?
Real quick, you may not, may not be able to answer this question, but the, the letter from, from Mark Matthews, does, does he have any legal recourse that could impact? Not, not, not legal, not legal recourse towards the city, but legal recourse towards the, this Highland Park, Highland Lake, excuse me?
Yes, sir. He, he would have potential legal recourse that he could take against the other developer. But again, that would not be a city issue.
Right. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions? No further questions, and is there someone here to represent the application?
Nicholas Croon, address thirty-six twenty-nine College Road, South Abbe, Mississippi. I have nothing else to add unless y'all have questions.
You won't have any questions? No questions?
Hey, I've got a question.
Oh, okay, got one.
You okay with the potential legal recourse?
Both are my client, so. They'll work it out at some point.
All right. You gave a correct answer.
Yeah.
Any, any other questions?
All right, thank y'all.
No further questions, thank you. Once again, this is a plat and does not require a public hearing, but I will open it for a public hearing if one person wishes to come forth and, you know, give their viewpoint for or against it. Does anyone wish to come forward? If not, then the public hearing is closed, and I will open it to the commissioners for any comments, recommendations, or motions that need to be made.
I make a motion to approve.
All right, we've got a motion from Ms. Singer to approve the application, and I'm, I guess, subject to the staff recommendations that they're before us. Do we, do we have a second?
A second?
All right, we have a second by Mr. Jones. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And the motion is carried and the application is approved. Now, under New Business, we've got an application for a zoning map amendment submitted by Ben Smith, Smith Walker Engineering and Surveying, on behalf of property owner Acry Family Trust. The request is to rezone two parcels totaling twenty-eight point five nine plus or minus acres from AR Agricultural Residential District to R one Single Family Residential District for the purpose of a detached single-family residential subdivision. The subject property is located at the northeast corner of Hamilton Circle North and Hamilton Circle West, east of Hummingbird Drive. We'll now have the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These particular application has an accompanying preliminary plat, but I would prefer to present them separately. Otherwise, there are too many elements in each, they can get very confusing, so I want to deal with the criteria separately. So the property we are looking at is a twenty-eight, about twenty-eight point five eight acre, consisting of two parcels. So both these parcels and these parcels are part of this rezoning. Both of them constitute the subject property. So every time I say subject property, it refers to both parcels, not just one. And it is, the subject property is located south of Bluebird Lane. This is the intersection of Craft and Bluebird Lane, where you've got that gas station, you have the water tower. If you continue south, you get to Hamilton Circle North, you make a right, and once you pass Mary Drive, pass the first house, the next large vacant area there, that is the area of the subject property. You have these two parcels at the southern corner here, they are not part of this rezoning. Kevin, we deal with those sort of, these sort of parcel. So the subject parcel is only these two, twenty-eight point five eight acres. It also lies along Hummingbird Drive. If you continue southward on Hummingbird Drive from Bluebird Lane, it goes down to that dead-end street. Couple of, I think about two years ago, or maybe last year, the planning commission recommended that the Board of Aldermen approve the subdivision of this seven four one five Humming, uh, Hamilton Circle West property right here. That is not part of this particular rezoning being proposed. The general area, as you will see, it consists of, you have smaller lots along Mary Drive, Mary Drive, and the Hamilton Place subdivision, and Ivy Trail, but to the north, you've got large estate lots along Bluebird Lane. These are very old subdivisions, have been in existence for long. The both parcels constituting our subject property are currently zoned AR Agricultural Residential, which requires that lots be minimum one acre in size. The AR district can also be developed with open dishes, without any requirement for sidewalks. It adjoins to the east and R one district area along Mary Drive. The northeast is also zoned AR, this particular area. If you cross over to the west, partially borders AR, these are very large estate lots, old subdivisions. If you come a bit, move southwest in this area, there's Ivy Trail, it's a PUD with smaller lot subdivision. In the south, you have R one district in Hamilton Place. These area zoned R three, that's of future development of Hamilton Place. That particular phase is already approved for smaller lots too. So the request before you is to rezone these two parcels from AR Agricultural Residential to R one Single Family Residential. The purpose is to construct detached single-family residential houses on a total of seventy-one lots, minimum twelve thousand five hundred square feet in size. That's a minimum lot size in the R one district. Because the property is currently zoned AR, which requires lots to be minimum one acre, in order to develop this property, for lots that are minimum twelve thousand five hundred square feet in size, the two parcels have to be rezoned. That is the reason you have this rezoning request. In the R one zoning district, the lots must have, be at least eighty-five feet wide at the building setback line, front building setback line. Basically, that's a lot width, minimum eighty-five feet wide. The developer proposes that the houses will be have minimum two thousand square feet heated area. That excludes porches, garages, that, that, those are excluded. The gross density will be two point four eight dwelling units per acre. In the R one zoning district, minimum density, maximum permitted density, gross density is three point five dwelling units per acre. The developer does not propose this to be phased, so it will be constructed at one. And the developer also does not propose to connect, at this time, Mary Drive onto this subdivision. So this hatch area you see here, that will simply be dedicated as future right-of-way. The reason being, the developer only owns the land to the center of this street, if you're going northward. It doesn't own the entire property. The rest of this property is owned by the Blake, who are not interested in selling the property at this time. So he can only deal with what he has, basically. Developer can only deal with what he has. This is what is proposed. To the north, where this development will adjoin the rural estate subdivisions larger than one acre lot, the developer proposes a twenty-five-feet-wide green buffer with a six-feet-high cedar fence and brick columns. This particular area, where you have these arrows here and here, there is no, those have been cleared, the trees that are there have been cleared, and the developer proposes to, to replant them, basically. You have two stormwater management areas, one closer to Humming, Hummingbird Drive at this location, and the other just behind the property owned by Mr. Blake, smaller one, at this particular location, for the management of storm- at this particular location, for the management of stormwater. Issues regarding this infrastructure and this layout, all of these will be hatched out in the preliminary plat. That's really where we, we'll get into the details on this. The real question before the planning commission now, in this particular point, is whether this property should be rezoned from AR to R-one. Understood law, to do that rezoning, the plat must meet one of two conditions. Condition one, there has to be, the planning commission has to find that the existing zoning is in error. The applicant does not claim that there is any mistake in the existing AR zoning district. Staff also does not find that there is any existing, there is any mistake in the existing AR zoning district designation, because this property was annexed into the city in nineteen ninety. At that time, it was zoned AR, and since then, there has been no rezoning of the property. So this is the zoning of the property for the past thirty years or so. Uh, it's been like this since it was annexed into the city. So the applicant neither claims a rezoning, a, a mistake, nor does staff find one. The second criteria, which is really in two parts. The first is whether there has been a change in the character of the area to warrant the rezoning of this property as proposed, and whether there is a public need for this rezoning. Regarding the change in the character of the area, this is the subject property under consideration. To the east, look at this area, these lots along, along Mary Day Drive. This is the Herbert Acre Craft Road subdivision. It was rezoned in the year, in two thousand, from AR, the same zoning district that you currently have the subject property, to R-one, the same rezoning that the applicant is requesting. The lot sizes range from twelve thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight square feet to twenty-five thousand three hundred and fifty-three square feet. The character of this particular area has changed from the early two thousand, from what was agricultural rural residential to the suburban neighborhood. So, this entire acreage has changed. If you look at all of this area, it was also, there have been multiple rezonings from nineteen ninety-six to nineteen ninety-seven, all of them rezoned from AR Agricultural Residential to R-one. The lot sizes ranging from twelve thousand five hundred and three square feet to about twenty-eight thousand square feet. The area, all of this area has changed from agricultural rural residential to suburban neighborhood. If you go to the east, further to the west, where you have Ivy Trail subdivision, there have been multiple rezonings from nineteen ninety-six to nineteen ninety-nine, rezoning that whole area, that whole PD, from agricultural residential to PUD, with a lot sizes ranging from nine thousand six hundred to forty-six thousand, about forty-six thousand square feet. So all of that area has also changed from agricultural and rural residential to suburban neighborhood. So basically, what you have is a piece of property that is today sandwiched to the west, to the east, to the southeast, and this area, this vacant piece, or this large piece right here, which is this, is also approved for the Hamilton Place subdivision, part of the PUD, it's a PUD, Zone R-three, Plan Residential District, for lots that are suburban neighborhood in character. These are lots that are generally ranging in size from about twelve thousand to, uh, fifteen, thirty thousand square feet. So, what the applicant is proposing aligns with a general change in character of the area that has occurred in the last twenty-five years or so. The only other area that has not changed is to the north, and that is certainly going nowhere. Those lots are already developed as rural estates. With regard to whether there is a public need, the key area that determines the public need is what a comprehensive plan says, because a comprehensive plan policies articulate the public needs of the city with regard to land use. The comprehensible, future land use map in the comprehensive plan designates this subject property as suburban neighborhood. It specifies that the character of this area has, this area has lots that range in size from six thousand square feet to thirty thousand square feet, with most being twelve thousand to fifteen thousand square feet range, which is exactly what the applicant is proposing. So what is being proposed aligns with the comprehensive plan and as such meets the public need criteria. Based upon a finding that the character of the area has changed significantly overwhelmingly, predominantly, from agricultural and rural residential to suburban neighborhood, and that the property, the subject property is designated as suburban neighborhood in the future land use map, as such meets the public need criteria, staffs recommend that the planning commission recommend approval of this rezoning to the Board of Admin, thank you.
Thank you, any questions to staff? No questions, do we have someone here to represent the application?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Corey Brady, ninety-nine sixty-seven Bentwood Creek Cove, Cogreville, Tennessee.
Chance Walker, Smith Walker Engineering, eighty-one eighty Airways Boulevard, South Haven.
Uh, as always, the song does a fantastic job, and it's presentation pretty thorough, so we don't really have anything to add, but we're here to answer any questions that you may have or provide any more commentary. Thank you.
Any, any other questions? No further questions, and thank you, sir. Uh, now we'll open for the public hearing, and, uh, I have two names here from the sign-in cards, I'm, is it, Jan, let's see, Jeanette Owens, if you wish to come forward and make some comments. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less, and, um, only one trip to the podium, and anyone come after, try not to be repetitive on that.
Thank you very much, Jeanette Owens, J-A-N-E-T-T-E, seven-five-seven-one, Hummingbird Drive. I speak in opposition to the construction of seventy-one new homes. I believe this development would result in a significant loss of natural habitat for local wildlife, displacing animals that may rely on that space for survival. It also reduces the limited green space our community has left. Green space that serves not only as a refuge for nature, but also as a vital resource for mental well-being, environmental health, and community connection. We must consider the long-term consequences of this decision. Once natural space is gone, we cannot get it back. I urge the planners and decision-makers to explore more sustainable options that preserve our environment and protect our local ecosystems. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Uh, Bobby Barrett, if you'll come forward, please.
Hi, I'm Bobby Barrett, seven-two-six-six, North Hamilton Circle. I've been there over forty years, and I apologize for the mask, my husband's had some treatments. I agree with what this lady just said, but also, the traffic problem that is on North Hamilton Circle has been known for many, many years. We've had so many accidents, so many people going off the road. One gentleman lost his life in the curve of the road. And, um, because of that, um, it's a two-lane road. We have traffic that comes in from Ivy Trails, from Hamilton Place, people come from Craft Road, Goodman Road, the movie theater, even though you're not supposed to turn left, they do. The church that's going to be built on the corner is going to be a lot more traffic as well. Uh, people in our street, you can't go for a walk on Hamilton Circle anymore. Kids can't play out in the front yard from my neighbor across the street because of cars losing control. And the police have, they go up and down the road, but they're racing, the, um, daytime, nighttime, it's not just limited to the daytime. So, it, with it being a two-lane road, there's never been any speed bumps. We've asked about them before, and we were told we had to get a, um, get everybody's signature to do it, and we're not able to do that. The litter is terrible from what's already there. And maybe there is a plan for the road that I don't know about, I didn't see that, that access, I didn't understand it, where the roads are going to go in and out onto Hamilton Circle. But any additional traffic is going to make a bad situation, very, very bad. There has been some lights that were installed at the curve of the road, I appreciate that. But, we've had semi trucks that have come down to go to Aldi's. They've torn out the power lines before, which has nothing to do with the new subdivision, but I'm just trying to emphasize how bad the traffic already is. If that is something that's going to be addressed, and that I just don't have the information from, for, I would like to know. But, for long-time residents on this street, more and more traffic is just, it's a nightmare to try to consider. And I appreciate y'all's time, I'm not comfortable doing this, but I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. Is there anyone else that wishes to come forward? And please state your name and address.
My name is Beverly Stewart, and I'm at seven-three-nine-seven Carmen Drive, um, in the Ivy Trail subdivision. And I'm sorry I didn't get my card up earlier, I just had that question. But one of my concerns is about this new subdivision, is you're building new buildings in the area just across, across from the Ivy Trail subdivisions, and there are vacant spaces, talking about the character of that area altogether. You're building brand-new units, a lot of brand-new units in that area, and we are concerned about how Ivy Trail itself is going down, and the roads are not being resurfaced, so that our area, our common area that we already have, looks good for the character. There's also three vacant units on, uh, Hamilton Circle, with trees that the grass is growing up, and we don't know what's going to happen with those vacant spaces either. So it seems to me counterproductive to build brand-new units in that same area, and you have units and spaces in the Ivy Trail area that's going down as well. So that's my concern about the project, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I think we have one more, uh, to speak.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
My name is Henrietta Tubbs. I live at sixty-seven ninety-four St. Michael's. Where they're trying to build is on the backside of me. And I do understand what they're saying about all the traffic and everything. But, uh, my concern is the sizes of the houses. You know, uh, we, uh, I've been blessed to be there twenty-one years, and I do not want my property value to go down, because they want to be a several smaller houses and everything. And there is a lot of, uh, new people coming to the neighborhood, so they are roaming around, and I just feel like with all that extra traffic, like they said, that we're just going to get people that we don't need when we live in a comfortable life right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now close the public hearing, any questions of staff? Do we have any questions before? Uh, if not, then I'll open it for any comments, discussion, or any motions that we wish to make at this time.
Uh, I'll make a motion. Based on the fact that the character of the subject property area has changed in the last thirty years from agricultural rural residential to suburban neighborhood, which is, which the requested rezoning aligns with, and there's a public need, public need for the rezoning is evident in the future land use map designation of the property. I recommend that the Board of Admin approve the rezoning.
Okay, we, we have a motion to approve the application, subject to any staff recommendations that we have, do we have a second? Mr. Jones made the motion. Do we? All right, we have a second by Mr. Long. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Uh, any opposed? Then the motion carries and, and the application is approved. The, the second part of this is an application for a preliminary plat for Acre Farm Subdivision submitted by Ben Smith, Smith Walker Engineering and Surveying on behalf of the property owner Acre Family Trust. The request is to subdivide the twenty-eight point five nine plus or minus acres into seventy-one single-family lots in two common open spaces. There's a companion application requesting rezoning from AR to R-one Single Family Residential for the purpose of a residential subdivision. The subject property is located at the northeast corner of Hamilton Circle North and Hamilton Circle West, east of Hummingbird Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners, this is a companion application to the rezoning that you just acted upon. The preliminary plat before you involves a proposal for seventy-one lots, uh, with this street network as shown, minimum lot size being twelve thousand five hundred square feet. Uh, Humming Redbird Drive will be offset with this new street that is being proposed. The purpose is to avoid this becoming a raceway, and everybody just going across from one end to the other, crisscrossing Hummingbird Drive. So, the developer proposed to kind of jog those streets. The second element, yes, there would be a con, a, a connection of this subdivision down to Hamilton Circle North. So you have one connection down on Hamilton Circle North. With respect to Mary Drive, the developer does not propose to connect Mary Drive to this new subdivision. At this time at least, two reasons. First, as I did mention, the, the way Mary Drive is currently laid, half of the right-of-way, if you were to extend it northward, half of it would be on the subject property, and the other half would be on the property that is owned by the Blakes. And they are not interested in selling their property at this time to be part of this subdivision in any way, shape, or form. As such, you really cannot extend this road northward and align it properly without some use of the Blake's property, it really would not work. For that reason, the developer proposes to rather dedicate a, I think it's twenty feet wide, thirty feet wide right-of-way, for any future connection or expansion of that particular road. These proposed roads would therefore end in a hammerhead. This would need to be revised to meet the city's fire code. Uh, it's currently drawn, it needs to be revised to meet the fire code, and it would be best for that to be done before this moves forward to the Board of Admin. The Blakes have been concerned, and they have asked me several times, whether this will make their property landlocked. Most likely what is going to happen is whoever comes to build a house here, this is a one-point-nine acre parcel, whoever comes to buy that and build a piece, and build a house here, will most likely just put a driveway from the end of this hammerhead going into that property. So this would not be landlocked, from, from that particular perspective. Um, I have discussed that hammerhead, it needs to be, you know, there will be no connection to Mary Day Drive, and it's to be redesigned to meet the city's fire code. It is the opinion of the city engineer that the possibility that this road will ever really connect to Mary Day Drive is very, very slim, from an economics perspective. It is not foreseeable that whoever buys this property in future, one point eight, point nine acres, will produce, will be able to create lots here sufficient enough to go ahead and build this road. That just will not happen. So it is most likely rather that this will not be built, and Mary Day Drive will just simply be left as it is, you know, terminated nowhere. In order to avoid that, there is need for a provision of a partial fifty-feet radius as currently shown here in green, um, so that in future, if the Blake's property is planted, then you can acquire the rest of it, and city can go in at some point and just complete that, that road and provide a turnaround that, that ends Mary Day Drive, Mary Drive, instead of having these routes that are forever uncompleted in the city, you know. So, that is the transportation element of this plan. All the streets will be constructed with curb, gutter, sidewalks. And they will All the streets will be constructed with curb, gutter sidewalks, and they will all have storm, all the lots will have stormwater management in these areas within the subdivision. No amenities are proposed at this time. When the Planning Commission approved Camden Cove over College Road, that subdivision only proposed 35 lots, similar in size to what is being proposed here. And the Planning Commission required them to have an amenity for the subdivision known as being proposed here. And that is, that is one of the conditions of approval that staff has included. With respect to utilities, water lines are available along, shown here in blue, along Homingbird, also water lines along Hamilton Circle North that the applicant can, will be able, even on Mary Drive, will be able to extend into this subdivision. See what is also available, shown here in green. It will be the applicant's responsibility to extend all these utilities, including gas, here in yellow, as a gas line. It will be the applicant's responsibility to extend all these utilities to service the proposed lots. Based upon the finding that this plat made the subdivision regulation, that in subject to it being rezoned to this property, being rezoned to R1, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of this plat, subject to a number of conditions, 1 to 14. Condition number one, being that the Board of Assemblymen rezones the subject property from AR to R1. If the rezoning doesn't go through, then the plat is useless. The plat will not meet the minimum one-acre lot requirement. Condition number four, the developer shall revise the preliminary plat to provide a fully curved hammerhead street design that meets the international fire code requirements of the city before this plat is presented to the Board of Assemblymen. Condition number five addresses the provision of that partial 50-foot radius on Meridale Drive. Condition number six, because these lots are generally small compared to the one-acre lot, the tendency is for developers to go in and clearcut everything, just bring down every single tree in the subdivision. The, the, there is need for, and it's a matter of practicality. You really cannot develop lots that are 12,500 square feet in size and, and preserve all the trees in that area. You have to, grading of the side will affect the roots. To build the roads and so on will affect the root of trees. So the developer, condition number six, requires the developer to replan for every one, two to two and a half caliber deciduous tree shall be planted in the front yard of each home prior to use and occupancy of the house. Two trees shall be planted for corner lots or lots that are 80 feet, that have at least 80 feet of frontage. Basically, all the lots in this subdivision do. Because to me, the R1 zoning district, you have to be minimum 85 feet wide. So really, they will be required to have two trees. All lots shall be side or rear-loaded. It will be tough to get it rear-loaded on this side, except you have a design where they kind of have a driveway looking at the back, looping at the back. Most of them will have to be side-loaded. That has been the general development character in this city, wants lots hit 50, 50, 50 feet wide and above. Condition number nine, revise the preliminary plat to provide at least one common recreational amenity in the subdivision. Condition number 10 addresses general roof design. Condition number 11, basically, homes shall be minimum 2,000 square feet of heated area as was proposed by the developer, but then also adding that a minimum 75% manucery-type construction for all the facades of the houses. In that area, along Mary Drive, it's 100% brick. If you go out there, it's 100% brick. So the developer has a new way there to, 25%, you can incorporate all that material. Fourteenth condition, at final plat submitter, the developer shall submit for concurrent review draft CC arrows for the homeowners' association. We shall include provisions for the management of all common open spaces. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions of staff? No questions. Does a applicant wish, wish to make any comments this time?
Mr. Chairman, again, Corey Brady, 9967 Bentwood Creek Cove and Chance Walker.
Chance Walker, Smith Walker Engineering, 8180, Airways Boulevard, South Avenue.
Obviously, Chance is here at engineering capacity. I'm here in a planning capacity representing Garden Street Communities, the developer of the preliminary plat that's before you today. And I, I just want to underscore what has already been stated very thoroughly by staff, that this is compliant with the R1 zoning, this is consistent, compatible with the recommendations of the Conference of Land Use Plan in every way. The lots that are proposed, again, comply with the R1 zoning that we previously indicated, but also they exceed many of the lots in the, size of the adjacent lots in many of the adjacent subdivisions, Ivy Trails, for example. We are offering an elevated minimum heated floor area above and beyond what is typical in the area, 2,000 square feet, that was mentioned in the staff report. And all of the conditions that have been brought forth, we agree to with the exception of number eight, that we just want to discuss, is all it is. And that condition states that all lots shall have side or rear-loaded, shall be side or rear-loaded, and that's referencing the garages. And I have some illustrations that I, I can hand out. Luckily, I brought four today, but I can't give one to staff necessarily. I, I thought we'd be able to project it for those in the crowd. These are just standard lot illustrations that show the types of homes that we intend to develop on these lots with the two driveway formats, just to show you why we want to discuss it. What we're asking for is the word "all" lot shall be to, to allow us to allow some that are street-facing for, for the lots. I'll show you. There's four, one for each. But I'll convey what those illustrate. What you'll see is four sheets of paper. There's a standard lot configuration and then a corner lot configuration for two types of homes. And on each of those, you'll see a proposed condition for the driveway and then an alternative in parentheses that says "condition," which is the side-loaded, which turns the garage 90 degrees. And if you notice, on the conditioned version, to get in a side-loaded garage, we needed an additional 25 feet from that garage face. And on our smallest home, if we were to apply that 25 feet, we're on the property line. On the other homes, because we're, the size of these homes are larger, we're actually encroaching beyond the property line seven feet or, and some change, and that's in there. So you can see from a practicality standpoint how that may not work. But on corner lots, you'll see each of those floor plans show how a side garage could function in those cases. And we very well would be willing to and capable of developing those side-loaded garages. So those are the illustrations, and those are the items. We want to talk about the rest of the conditions. We agree with the, the brick and everything else. That's, the, the character of these homes will, will exhibit that. I also want to underscore that we had a neighborhood meeting a couple of weeks ago, met with everyone. We're very much respectful. Everyone that attended was very respectful. We had some good commentary. This plan was what presented to, was what was presented to them at that time. So if there's anyone that has any question, I'd like to be able to address those after we discuss the garage situation, if you will. Is it, are, are the illustrations clear? For, I mean, does it, is it, is there any questions regarding the illustrations with what they show?
I've got a question. The, the example you gave for the side-load had it coming from outside, outside of the proper, outside of the...
The hatch more?
Yeah. And so I've, I've got two questions. The first one is the, the, the 10, and I really want to give, how about I, I save my questions because I want to hear from the public first?
Sure.
And then let you respond to the public, and then I will, I'll voice...
The only other thing I wanted to add to the commentary about the garage is when you look at the area, the context of the neighborhood, 90% of the existing homes in this district have street-facing garages. The exception, I'm sorry.
And the reason we, the reason we go for side-facing is because 90% of those, 90%, you've got people parking in their driveway, which end up parking on the sidewalk, which end up parking on the street.
I understand.
And so there's, and so there's reasons behind the request for side-load or re-load.
Well, again, we want to just discuss the options. Not every, not all. We agree in some practical measures, the side-loads do work well. Again, it's not, it's just that term "all" creates somewhat of a practical difficulty, is all. We'll get into it.
Maybe we can find some common ground after we hear from the public.
Any other, any other questions? We've got one more question.
I have a question, but mine is on number, number nine.
Yes, ma'am.
So I understand then by this that you have met with the residents, and you have agreed to revise the preliminary plat to provide at least one common recreational amenity area in the subdivision?
Yeah, yeah. So in the common open space one, I believe, which will be the largest stormwater management facility, we, we're proposing a, a walking trail with the pavilion. That's, that's also where the mailbox cluster is going to be located, but it, it will be amended to show a, a walking trail with, with a, some type of pavilion for events and of that sort for the subdivision.
And as far as you anticipate, will the land have to be raised of all trees in that particular area in order to construct the, the stormwater?
So typically, with mass grading, the trees do come down. We, we do our best at locations to, to save as much as we can. At this time, it's hard to say, but, but typically, mass grading creates the trees to, to come down, so.
Right. And what about providing with the walking trails, planting, or does that come later, at a later time? Planting of appropriate landscaping, some trees to make?
Yeah, there'll, there'll be, definitely be landscaping, yes, ma'am. Yeah, it'll definitely have some sort of landscaping. It'll be sodded, trees and shrubbery and things of that nature will be around the, the walking trail.
And, and this may come later too, but just a quick question. Would the maintenance of these walking trails fall under the responsibility of homeowners' association?
Yes.
To maintain? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? No other questions, and thank you. I'll now open it for a public hearing. We normally don't have public hearings for plats, but I think in this case, it's necessary. If anyone wishes to come forward and make their comments about the plat only, and once again, you're limited to three minutes, and, and restate your name again, please.
Yes. Bobby Barrett, 7266 North Hamilton Circle. Again, there is the entrance or the exit from this subdivision onto a two-lane, small street. Is there any plan to make anything any different on that street so that the rest of the people that are using that street, as I stated before, there is already so much traffic on it, and ever how many houses is planned in this subdivision is going to make a terrible situation a whole lot worse. If y'all lived on that street, I guarantee you, you would be reconsidering this. Craft Road, Ivy Trails, Hamilton Circle, the movie theater, cars constantly. You can't go to your mailbox without fear that if you step over, somebody's going to hit you. This is not hyperbole. This is fact. Not to mention that Olive Branch has been wiped out of the character that it had for so many years. I understand progress. I know I'm old, 74 years old. I've seen Olive Branch change. But such a drastic change, as it has been approved time after time, is not considering the people of Olive Branch and the nature of Olive Branch. I just beg you to consider it. Even drive down the street yourself, if you haven't already, and see what I'm talking about. Sometimes there may be no one on the street, and sometimes there's a charger that flies by. And that happens more often than not, and the police cannot be there all the time. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward? Once again, limited to the plat itself.
Janette Owens, J.A.N.E.T.T.E., 7571, Hummingbird Drive. Do I need to read this again, or can we just?
No, you can just state it, your opposition, if you wish to do that. So we've already got you on record.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
And by the way, I'm on the corner of Hummingbird and Redbird. I'm on a corner, and my garage is side-loading, so have the benefit of having people, if they come visit, they can park on the street. There is some concern about where the fire department is on Craft and Bluebird. Sometimes, you know, we have that four-stop sign with Bluebird and Hummingbird. A lot of times, the vehicles don't even stop, they just blow through. And then, you know, you have your fire, your emergency vehicles, they come plowing through. So there's some concern there with the potential accident and a little bit of congestion. But you already know my feelings about nature.
And please state your name and address, please.
My name is Barbara Blake. I live at 6805 Bluebird Lane, about a house and a church down behind the fire department. And we have a terrific, like she said before, to come over Hamilton, come over to Bluebird Street, see all the traffic that we have. No, none of the children could even play out. We, we got up a, a boat to try and get speed bumps, but in our driveway. I've lived there 39 and a half years, two different locations. I used to live at 6645 Bluebird, down the road. They are now building up a fence. They, they bought that house, not from me, but a second owner, to keep, to have a quiet place to live. And we're told, you know, that as long as the acreage were alive, that they would not have anything to worry about as subdivision going in it. And the 91-year-old woman next door to me, towards Craft, her name is Long, I'm not sure of her address, but we were there when it was first built, and it had nothing but just a deadened road. We've gone through many, many, many changes. We cannot get a speed bump. We tried that two, three times. We were in this court office several years ago. The, the traffic is unbelievable. I can't even back out of my own driveway. I turn around, anybody else comes to visit me, turn around, because you're going to get hit. There's been cars that have come over into our yard and got caught in the culvert with a big old trailer. About three or four years ago, there was a car that came over, went through our cup, off top of our culvert, tore it all up, went across our driveway, flipped over backwards, upside down. And this is how the traffic runs, 90 miles an hour. We have begged the police department to set up in our driveway. We have some, some old bushes. We're not trying to tell them to try and trap them, but just be aware of what's going on. And that's our main concern. We do own the two acres that we are not going to sell. That's true, we're the Blakes. We love nature. We've camped and hunted all of our retired life. We've got a big pond, and we have it open to any of the kids in the neighborhood that want to, we stock it and we feed them, you know, with cat food. It's just, it's a big hindrance to have any more traffic coming down Bluebird. And especially right there, we should talk to Bluebird and Hummingbird, there've been more wrecks right there. I'm not going to say there's been a death, but there's been more wrecks right there than you can even imagine. And they've gone off into that little house right down at the corner, at the very corner of it, where it's going to back up to a pond. And I know she was kind of opposed to that. I'm not speaking for her. She is a single parent that lives there. But please consider the traffic as far as any roads, or any red lights, or any four-lanes. We need to be four-laned or three-laned. We need to be something, because it's, it's, it's just, it's a nightmare, night and day. And of course, the fire department got a lot, and we're thankful to have them, but they're down there all back and forth, you know, and so they hinder the traffic and hold it up. And that's my really only objective to it, and the size, the amount of houses going back there. I think that's a horrendous amount of houses for 29 points something acres, in my opinion. And I think that also to tear down all of the trees, thank God, I'm keeping my two lots with my trees right, right directly behind my house. But, you know, it is going to really destroy and look more like, which we also opposed, Ivy Trails. I've been there 39 years, like I say, my husband passed away. I married... I've been there thirty-nine years, like I say, my husband passed away, I married the guy down the street, because it wasn't too far for me to walk, so moved my furniture. And he'd been divorced a long time. Anyway, to say not any more than that, I just want you to just consider the traffic. And widening the roads, and having an exit on Hummingbird and also on Hamilton. I used to come through Hamilton, it was a shortcut to go to Aldi's and other places, but I myself drive so slow, I told my husband, I'm like creeping along, because they fly around that corner, and you can't see around the corner until you get around that corner. And they did just put up some lights recently, but that's been just recently.
Okay.
So how are they going to get out without running over somebody else too?
All right, thank you.
It needs to be four-layed anyway. But thank you, and I'm sorry I probably exceeded my three minutes, because I'm going to offer.
Thank you for your comments.
And I appreciate it very much, y'all. Have a good evening.
Okay. The public hearing will now be closed, and I will entertain any comments or questions or motions from the commissioners.
I've got a question for the applicant. On the, the lots on the north, there's a thing of a twenty-five-foot buffer?
Yes.
So you've got twenty-five-foot buffer, and with the, you know, when we've got all lots to be sided, rear-loaded, and putting two trees in the front yard?
And the corners three, one?
Yeah.
There's also some lots that don't have foliage, and we're proposing to add it in that twenty-five-foot buffer.
So what, what, how much space does that give somebody? Because those look, those look like the, the smallest lots, not in depth, but, but in width. And I really can't see the, the widths of those on the north side. What are, what's the?
They're all, so eighty-five foot's the minimum?
So you're, so.
About a hundred and fifty foot deep on an eighty-five-foot stand.
Okay.
A thousand five hundred square feet.
And so we'll go back to your, your side-load example. All your side-loads have the driveway outside of the, the framework of, of the house. And which, which, your illustration puts you right on the property line, but there's ways you can come straight up the, you know, you can position the house more central, and then drive, have the driveway come up, and you cross in, the driveway would be in front of the?
The courtyard, front courtyard loads.
Yeah.
Is what I call it.
So, so your example shows, shows one way of doing it, and shows how that puts you on the property line, but there's other ways to do it and meet the, meet the city's request. So would, would you consider, would you consider that?
When we discuss the front courts, and I think it's a matter of opinions, and they'll vary, a lot of front courts, your whole front yard becomes concrete, because of the nature of that. And that's a look that don't want to develop, and, and the home builder doesn't like either. That's why we would rather put it on the sides, outside of that front yard, so you have a traditional front yard in the front. Well, I understand courtyards and exactly what you're saying, and it very well could accomplish that goal. It's, it's not a look that we want to provide. Personally, I don't like them. I've lived in it before, I didn't walk out my front porch, just driveway. That's my personal opinion, others may, may vary. But we would prefer, if it were side-loaded, to be on the side on a corner lot if we could, and then we would use the depth of the setback to give enough queuing space. I heard you very loud and clear, people overhanging the sidewalks, and that's a bigger problem we see in a lot of our, our traditional neighborhoods that have fifteen-foot, you know, front setbacks. Obviously, there's not enough room, so we don't do that. But in this case, we're setting the buildings back.
Would, would you be willing to put in your HOA covenants, no street parking?
No street parking?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's something, because they're public streets, and we can't regulate that.
HOA can, do a whole lot.
Well, it, again, not, not being contradictory to it, I think it's something we can entertain. I can say my experience in my neighborhood, we have thirty-one-foot street, thirty-foot, fifty-foot right-ofways, traditional public right-ofways, and parking on the streets. And our attorney has advised the HOA that they cannot stop people from parking on a public street. That's Tennessee, this is Mississippi, but we actively pursued that because we had some issues in corners and blind corners, where people were say, it felt unsafe, it felt like the cars were, you know, they were going to run into cars. It was proposed at the HOA meeting, attorney said, can't do it. So, and in other instances, they, there's been, you know, putting up no parking signs at the developer's expense and all of that, and again, none of that's, I mean, it's just can it be regulated? And that's the problem.
And so it's, we've got, got to have a give and take, and, and that's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we're here for that.
If, if we've got a give and take, and you want to, to front-load garages?
Yeah.
We, we, we want to make sure that, that the neighborhood is aesthetically pleasing, and maybe it's no overnight, you know, and, and HOAs have their ways of, of getting people to not.
They, they can try. They can, they can do whatever they want.
Right. And so if, 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 if that would be feasible?
I think so.
Also, and, and we don't have anybody here representing the properties on the north side, which are the large estate, estate properties, but, you know, backing up to those large estate properties, I'm looking at four backyards.
Mm-hmm.
You know, as opposed to what I'm looking at now. Is there, would there be any consideration, because, let me back up a little, is there any, what's the traffic study on, have you done a traffic study on the, on, what is that street?
Hummingbird, Hamilton Circle.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Hamilton Cir, Hamilton, Hamilton Circle. What do you propose the increase in traffic is, for those people who brought up their, their concerns about additional traffic? What, 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 what do you see as the additional traffic when this?
Chance may want to jump in, but from a matter of, of a traffic study, a full traffic study is typically obviously done with the, with the construction drawings, so a full traffic study has been done. We looked at trip generation analyses and things like that, and it's our understanding that that intersection of Hummingbird or Hamilton, again, is supposed to be improved, and development improves those intersections. We're not contiguous to it, so we can't directly do anything about it, but I'm getting a little outside of my sandbox. Chance may be able to speak more to it. It's my understanding with the development, that the Hamilton piece that was mentioned, that is approved, undeveloped, there's potential for that to be approved. I, I can lean on staff, maybe they can add some color to it. That's, that's the limits of my knowledge about that. Otherwise, all the contiguous streets adjacent to our development will be improved in accordance to whatever city engineers and sub-rig specify, and we, we have an out onto Hamilton that will take you directly eastbound to Craft, directly to the interstate from there, or we, south to Goodman Road. We don't anticipate a high flow of traffic at all going through Redbird. I'm not going to stand here and look anybody now and say, nobody's ever going to turn and drive down Redbird's lane. It could happen, but it's not logical to be a very low percentage rate of traffic on, on that street. It's our understanding through talking with the engineers that we've talked with.
So, so seventy-one homes, what's, what's the general?
You don't talk, I mean, at all.
Seventy-one.
Is it seventy-one homes?
It would be a build out six hundred, that would generate six hundred and eighty trips per day. About fifteen percent of that would be your peak hour trips, so that's a hundred. And if you split those between the two connections, between Hummingbird Drive and Hamilton Circle, it would be fifty peak hour trips, you know, again, at the busiest part of the day in the AM, so you're talking about, you know, less than one trip per, I mean, you know, I mean, more than a minute would pass between trips. So I don't think traffic is an issue, although it does appear that there are some existing problems on Hamilton Circle. So one of the things, I don't think that it was discussed earlier, is, you know, this is curb gutter and sidewalk section, so on all of those lots, you get seven or eight lots that are facing Hamilton Circle, those would all be improved, instead of having an open swale section in those trees, you know, that would be improved with curb gutter and sidewalk. And then, you know, with the houses there that would have driveways out to the road, that might be something I think that would slow traffic a little bit, it would be more of a residential street as opposed to, we're driving by a bunch of trees and speeding down there. So I, I do think that's something that you may want to take into consideration on traffic. And again, that's not to say anything that any of the residents said was wrong, but I don't think that the numbers would show that traffic would be an issue in this particular case.
Thank you for stepping in, Jason. That's insensible with her. Again, we're doing our part for what we can do, contiguous of our development and those approvals, improvements.
I think if, if.
Oh, go ahead.
With the plan consent permits, on, on, on the two elements, one, the first one dealing with the, with the driveway, you know, whether it's side-loaded or front, front-loaded. General policy and practice in the city has been, if the lot width allows for side-loading, the development goes side-loading. If the lot width is too small, sometimes you have, like in some of these PUDs that are forty-feet-wide lots, you really cannot put a side-loaded and, and, and make it meaningful. Most often in that case, they will have rail-loaded, you know, using alleys. But if it is, if the lot width is large enough, it goes side-loaded. Part of it, and I think Corey kind of alluded to it, the HOA has very limited ability to control anything happening on a public street. Consider a public right-ofway, it's within the public realm, there, it's, the police have powers there, not the HOA. We get put into it, court enforcement gets put into it with parking on the street. City doesn't have all those resources to be spending with, with all these arguments. That is the reason why the general policy has been, if the lots are large enough, beyond fifty feet, put everybody on a side-loaded, and avoid this, this scenario, you know, that that's generally been the practice with the Board of Aldermen. The, with regard to the traffic impact on, on the streets, and I think once you disperse this in two different directions, yes, there is going to be increased traffic on these roads, there's no doubt about that. If you develop it under the current ARO district, it will be half the amount of traffic that the R1 will generate, it will be half. But it will not be so much that the existing streets cannot handle. That's a real question. It would have been better if Hamilton Circle West and Hamilton Circle North was a three-lane road with a middle turn lane. That would have been far better. There is no proposal here to turn that into, you know, into a three-lane road, it's just two lanes. You will have improvements on Hamilton Circle North, there will be a curb gutter sidewalk added to the side of the property that are joined, basically, if you look at your, your screen, that would be in the area, the applicant is only required to develop in the frontage of the property. So it's not like they will go in and view the entire, review the entire Hamilton Circle, no. They, that improvement will happen in the, in the front of the property. But because they are splitting this, it, it will help in some, in some regard, it will help. Splitting the traffic between Hamilton, Hummingbird Drive and Hamilton Circle North, some of the traffic will go that way, the other will come to the south, so.
I do think one point, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'm not a hundred percent sure of this, but I believe that the prospective builder, in this particular case specializes in single-story homes as opposed to two-story. So to get that minimum two thousand square feet, and I'm not sure, I didn't see the exhibits that Corey provided, but you end up with a little bit of a bigger footprint at the ground level, which would make it a little bit more difficult to do the side-entry garage. Now, obviously, if you've got two-story homes, and you've got eighty-five feet of width, and you're doing a two thousand or even a twenty-four, twenty-five hundred square foot home, you usually do have enough room to do that, but it can present a problem with the single-story. So you may want to consider that, and you could also, with respect to the on-street parking, you could also condition, if you were to make a recommendation for approval, that that provision be incorporated into the draft covenants, conditions, and restrictions, which you would see again when this project came back through the final plat.
Final plat.
Because remember what you're doing tonight, you, the rezoning, which you've already approved with the public hearing, now you're just discussing the plat, and basically approval of this plat gives them the opportunity to submit those construction plans to the, to the city engineer. And then when that construction's completed, or as it's underway, they'll bring this application back to you for final plat, at which time they'll put a lot of these items into those covenants and restrictions, such as brick content and the minimum size of the homes, and they can have that provision added in there if the planning commission were to request it, to not allow for on-street parking. So I think you can address some of the issues and still maybe accommodate what the prospective builder wants to do.
Yeah, we're more than happy to add that to the covenant. I think you and I are on the same page there. What Jason has said is a hundred percent accurate with regard to the homes as well, and thank you for, for adding that commentary, and Jason, but yeah, we're, we're, we're all agreeable on whatever we can do to curtail people from parking on the street. It's in everybody's interest.
And also what we're doing tonight is, the planning commission just recommends to the mayor and board of aldermen, so the mayor and board of aldermen will have that final.
Yes, sir.
Decision on, on what we decide tonight, so.
Thank you.
And you're still good with number nine? You good with nine?
Good with nine. Let me ask just one thing. Would you consider reducing the number of units from seventy-one units? There, that would give a bigger, would be less damage maybe to the subdivision, to the neighbors, and the ability to create more of a, a pleasing subdivision?
Passive. So I, I'm trying to figure out how to, I'm choosing my words, because sometimes I'm not the best. I want, I want to be very clear, that the, we are well under what is permitted density in the R1. To you, that doesn't matter, that's a number, you know, but we're not using it as a goal line in this case, where many are. We're also, the, the comprehensive land use plan actually allows smaller lots, or recommends for small lots, forgive me for saying this, speaking. So we feel like the twelve-five is not only comparable, it's larger than several of our lots, and it's comparable to the lots in the immediate area, but also the twelve thousand five hundred square feet, but also the seventy-one lots. Development costs and land costs nowadays have gotten so high, if I lower the cost, the, the yield, the cost of those homes are going to go up. And there is an absolute line, a threshold that can't be crossed, because we're taking out, for lack of a better word, the affordability of the home. We're trying to hit in a market that we want to be in, what Olive Branch supports, you know, and the less homes we have, the more those costs go up, and we have to still develop the very same infrastructure, the exact same number of, of, of streets, all of that, and then we are doing so with less lots to pay for it in the long run. So it just, it just adds cost to it. And at the end of the day, I can say from a lot of experience, twenty-five years of experience or more, if we went in with sixty lots compared to seventy-one, the disturbance in the subdivision's going to be generally the same because of that infrastructure. And I hope you know that I'm being genuine when I say that, that is a fact. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
We're at that point for more discussion or motions or comments from the commissioners.
I'll make a motion to approve preliminary plat. Subject to conditions one through seven, nine through thirteen, and and if, if the board of aldermen decides not to, not, not to accept number eight, that they add into, into fourteen, no on-street parking.
Okay, all right, let me try to phrase that. We've got a motion by Mr. Jones to approve application subject to items one through seven and nine through thirteen, and item number eight, I, I lost you on that, if you'll repeat what you want to do on item?
Item number eight, if the board, if the board decides not to accept, to remove the requirement for side or rear-loaded garages, that they add to the covenants and restrictions, that there should be no on-street parking.
Okay, have, have you got it down there?
Yeah, I've got it. First, subject to one through seven and nine through seventeen, and then four, reason we're moving number eight, add additional language to fourteen for no on-street parking and CCR.
Okay. Is that, is that what you said? Okay. We've got a, a motion by Mr. Jones. Do we have a second?
One second.
All right, we have a second by Ms. Singer. Any other discussion on this? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, then the motion carries, and it'll be, and approved, and be sent to the board of aldermen.
Thank you all.
Thank you. I think at this time, we need to just take about a five-minute break, and then we'll, we'll start back up.
The second is the character of the neighborhood has changed to such an extent to justify the proposed rezoning. The applicant's submission is that this area in general would have been considered rural until higher density housing developments began to spring up in the area in the early 2000s. Character of the area, of the surrounding area, has changed in the last 25 years. There are now currently several existing or proposed developments within a half mile of the subject property that is zoned R1, R2, R3, or PUD with similarly sized lots. The applicant is proposing to rezone the subject property to R1 zoning to fit into the similar property sizes that are being developed within the half mile area of the property and have the ability to construct a house on the lot. So, as you remember from the song's presentation, there are several developments in the area. And you can see on this map, I've got them circled here, 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 here. So, the staff finding is that single-family neighborhood development has occurred in the area upon vacant properties. Ivy Trails, PUD, Hamilton Place, Hamilton Place Phase Two, and Hamilton Circle have all been approved within the last 25 years, all having lots that are less than one acre in size, and mostly between 12,000 and 30,000 square feet. Thus, the character of the area has changed over the years from agricultural, agricultural residential to suburban neighborhood. A public need exists for the rezoning. The applicant's submission is that the applicant avows that there is an existing public need for the rezoning of this property with most of the lots in the surrounding developments already being sold and built out, the demand for homes is high in the community. Staff finds that Olive Branch has seen exponential growth in recent years. Thus, the housing stock needs to increase to accommodate the population surge. The future land use map designates the subject property as suburban neighborhood, with single-family residential as the predominant land use. Properties located near many new residential neighborhoods in the Hamilton Circle area, with detached single-family being the dominant housing type. We've already touched on those. From a planning perspective, a single-family residential parcel most aligns with the character of the area to satisfy the public need for the ever-growing housing market that Olive Branch has seen recently. The future land use map in the Comprehensive Plan 2040, which articulates the city's land use public need policies, designates the property in its entirety as suburban neighborhood. Olive Branch has seen population growth. Proposed construction of new single-family housing in the city implies a response by the development community and the city to address the public need for housing stock volume, meeting the needs of future city residents. So, our next steps. This application would move forward to the Board of Alderman for a final decision on the rezoning. If the property were to be rezoned and the accompanying subdivision applications are approved, the next step in the development process will be for the applicant to file permits for construction. The recommended motion is based on the finding that the proposed rezoning meets the rezoning criteria and does conform to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, is recommended by staff that the Planning Commission recommend approval to rezone the proposed .92 plus or minus acre Lot 1, located at 6602 Hamilton Circle West, from AR Agricultural Residential to R1 Single Family Residential. And that concludes staff presentation.
Thank you. Any questions to staff? If there are no questions, is there someone here that wishes to represent the application?
Andy Richardson, RNH Engineering and Surveying, 231 West Center Street, Hernando. And I'll be happy to answer any questions if y'all have any.
Any questions of Mr. Richardson?
Andy, would there be sidewalks developed here as well?
Uh, no. No, they would simply just have a driveway off Hamilton Circle.
That would be on the next application. We'll discuss that.
Be on the next application.
Yes.
Any other questions? No further questions, then thank you. Open it now for public hearing, anyone here to wish to speak in favor or against this application. If not, then the public hearing is closed, and I will just open it to any of the commissioners for comments, motions on this item.
I make a motion to approve the application.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Jones to approve the application. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second by Mr. Long. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the motion is approved and the application is approved. All right, the fourth part is, a part of this, it's an application for a final plat for Anzley Point subdivision submitted by Andy Richardson, RNH Engineering and Surveying, LLC. On behalf of Sunset Creek Farms LLC, Keith Binham, property owner. The request is to create a single residential lot of .92 plus or minus acres. There is an accompanying application asking to rezone from AR Agricultural Residential District to R1 Single Family Residential District. The subject .92 plus or minus acre property is at the northeast corner of Hamilton Circle North and Hamilton Circle West, known as 6602 Hamilton Circle North.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Point of clarification on this item, if you look at your paper agenda at new business item number four, which is this application, there is, it does say solo one lot subdivision on the paper agenda. However, a last-minute change by the applicant was for to change the name of the subdivision to Anzley Point in honor of his daughter. So therefore, the application, the subdivision is Anzley Point, just to affirm that. So, without further ado, this obviously is the same site. You've seen this map before on the top here, at the intersection of Hamilton Circle West and Hamilton Circle North. Background summary for Anzley Point subdivision. Andy Richardson, RNH Engineering, on behalf of Sunset Creek Farms LLC, has submitted for consideration the final plat for Anzley Point. It's a one-lot subdivision of a vacant and unplatted .92 plus or minus acre property located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Hamilton Circle North and Hamilton Circle West. The concurrent application, which you just voted on, was the rezoning application, ZP The parcel size is .92 acres. The purpose is to create one lot from a single unplatted parcel. It's vacant, future land use suburban neighborhood, and the applicable regulations are zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations, and other land use regulations of the city where applicable. And you can see, here's the lot itself right here. Here's the plat down on, right here in the lower right-hand corner of this slide. So on the next slide, we'll look at the utilities in the area. There are utilities that are readily available in the area. There's a 12-inch and 3-inch water main located in the Hamilton Circle right-of-way, right here, you can see in blue. There's a 6-inch gas main also located within the Hamilton Circle right-of-way, right here. There's an 8-inch water main with a hydrant located to the northwest of the site, right here, within the Hummingbird Circle, I'm sorry, Hummingbird Drive right-of-way. An 8-inch sewer line with manhole runs north-south along the west property line, right here in green, ties in, there's a manhole right here. And there's also an east-west 8-inch sewer line, which ties into the manhole along the north property line, right here. So, we'll move on to transportation. According to the Comprehensive Plan 2040, Hamilton Circle and Hummingbird Drive, if connected, right here, it will come like this and go like this, and that's an if it will be connected, would serve as an alternate minor route between Goodman Road, which is to the south, and Bluebird Lane, which is a major collector. The proposed lot is midpoint between Craft Road and Davidson Road, which are both north-south section line roads built on the one-mile grid system. Connecting Hummingbird Drive and Hamilton Circle would create a north-south alternate to reach Goodman Road and Bluebird Curbo Lane, which are east-west section line roads. Note that this is at the discretion of engineering at a future date. There is no, as far as bonds go, there's no construction of major public infrastructure is required, hence financial guarantee for infrastructure completion is not necessary before recordation of the plat. Variances and deviations, there's no variances or deviations requested from standards of the zoning ordinance and/or the subdivision regulations as may be applicable to the subject property. There is no variance or deviation necessary. No way, as far as waivers, no waiver of required subdivision infrastructure improvement is applicable to this subdivision request. So, the next steps. Upon the recommendation by the Planning Commission, the plat will be forwarded to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for consideration. If approved by the board, the plat would need to be recorded. Once the plat has been recorded, building permits may be issued for proposed development on the lot in accordance with city's land development regulations. So, the staff recommendation. Staff recommends approval of the final plat of Anzley Point Lot 1, subject to the following conditions. 1 through 6, lot improvements shall be the responsibility of the developer. Future development on Lot 1 should comply with the city's various land development regulations. Stormwater improvements must be approved by the city engineer. The requirement for sidewalks along Hamilton Circle is waived. The final plat must be recorded before building permit may be issued, and minor edits are applicable to the final plat as may be required by city regulations and deemed necessary by staff. That concludes presentation.
Okay, any questions to staff? Any questions of Mr. Richardson? No question. We do not require a public hearing, so I will open it for any comments, discussion, or motions from the commissioners.
I make a motion to approve the final plat of Anzley Point Lot 1, subject to the conditions 1 through 6.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Lewis to approve the application, subject to the staff conditions. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a second by Ms. Singer. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the motion is carried and the application is approved. Thank you. All right, item number five is an application for a final plat for Eagle Commercial Subdivision. Lots 4 and 5 submitted by Bob Farley, Farley Surveying LLC. On behalf of Eagle Land LLC, property owner. The request is to subdivide 6.41 plus or minus acres into two lots. The subject property is on C2 Highway Commercial District and is located on the west side of Hacks Cross Road, just south of Burlington Northern Railroad Track and north of Highway 178. We'll have staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This application is for a three-lot subdivision, I'm sorry, two-lot subdivision, right here, proposed Lot 5, as you can see, and then proposed Lot 4. It's on the west side of Hacks Cross. The applicant is Bob Farley with Farley Surveying, on behalf of Eagle Land LLC. The final plat is for, as I said, a two-lot subdivision of an unplatted 6.41 plus or minus acre property located at the southwest corner, southwest corner, of the intersection of Hacks Cross, right here, and the BSNF Railroad right-of-way, which is right here on the north. The property is presently zoned C2 Highway Commercial. The proposed lots are presently vacant, and there is no minimum lot area requirement. As stated, the present zoning is C2 Highway Commercial, 6.41 acres on property located on the southwest corner of Hacks and BNSF Railroad right-of-way. The purpose is to create two lots from a single unplatted parcel. They are vacant, and the future land use is commercial corridor, and the applicable regulations are the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. So, in stat, the staff analysis is, as far as utilities, there is a 16-inch water main running along Hacks, an 8-inch water main, and a 6-inch gas main, all located along Hacks Cross. There are also existing sewer and utility easements along the west property line, you can see right here, proposed, which go to, right here, Lot 3, to the south, where there's a pump station. There's an existing pump station right here. These easements will be extended into lots, so this easement is right here, will be extended into lots 4 and 5, which would allow for access to an existing pump station on the west side of Lot 3, right here, as I stated earlier. There are also communication pedestals located along the northeast corner, located in the northeast corner of Lot 5, about right here, and the southeast corner of Lot 4, right here. An existing electrical pole with dips servicing Lot 3 is in the northeast corner of Lot 3. So there's some dips, there's an electrical pole with a dip right here to go underground off of an overhead electric. Transportation. According to the Comprehensive Plan 2040, Hacks Cross Road is classified as a minor arterial roadway. Proposed lots 4 and 5 have public street frontage on Hacks Cross Road. A 75-foot cross-axis easement is proposed along the east property line of Lot 4, right here. This easement is reduced to 50 feet on Lot 5. A conditional use permit was granted by the Board of Adjustment in May 2025 for a potential outdoor contractor storage yard on proposed Lot 5. Condition approval of this cup required that the development of Lot 5 be interconnected, right here, so it be interconnected with the southern proposed Lot 4 for cross-access purposes. There is an existing drive apron located, it's about right here, approximately 140 feet south of the railroad right-of-way, so it's about right here. There is no construction of major public infrastructure, hence financial guarantee for infrastructure completion is not necessary for recordation of the plat. There are no variances or deviations from the standards of the zoning ordinance and/or subdivision regulations, so, and there's no variance or deviations necessary. Also, there's no waiver of required subdivision infrastructure improvement to this request. So, the next steps. Upon recommendation by the Planning Commission, the plat will be forwarded to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for consideration. If approved by the board, the plat will be, need to be recorded. Once the plat has been recorded, the lots may be sold or building permits issued for proposed developments on the lots in accordance with the city's land development regulations. So, the staff recommendation is that the staff recommends approval of the final plat of lots 4 and 5, Eagle Commercial Subdivision, subject to the following conditions. Lot improvements shall be the responsibility of the developer and not Olive Branch. Future development on the lot shall comply with the requirements of the city's various land development regulations. Stormwater improvements must be approved by the city engineer and MDEQ. All utilities and services shall be installed underground. The developer of each of the lots should construct a sidewalk along Hacks Cross Road, street frontage of the concerned lot. A bond or letter of credit for the sidewalks is not required before recordation of the plat. The final plat must be recorded before building permit may be issued, and minor edits are applicable to the final plat as may be required by city regulations and deemed necessary by city staff. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, any questions to staff? I see Mr. Farley out there, if you wish to come represent the application.
How are y'all? Bob Farley, 235 West Shulahoma Avenue, Holly Springs, Mississippi.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Farley? No questions, then thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Long. He may run for cover.
He's finding out what a long meeting is all about. So, anyway, I will now open for any discussion or motions from the commissioners.
Make a motion to approve the application.
All right, we've got a motion by Mr. Jones to approve the application, subject to the staff recommendations. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Mr. Long. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Then the motion carries and the application is approved. Thank you so much. All right, we got an application for a zoning map amendment submitted by German Perrigoy, PE, Kimley Horn and Associates, on behalf of Land Grant LLC, Mark Bowden, property owner. The request is rezone two parcels from AR Agricultural Residential District to M1 Light Industrial District. The first parcel is 1.11 plus or minus acres located on the south side of Kirk Road, approximately 760 feet east of Polk Lane, known as 12215 Kirk Road. The second parcel is 3 point, it's 2.55 plus or minus acres at the north end of Eastern Drive, approximately 325 feet north of DeSoto Road, known as 8048 Eastern Drive. Staff presentation.
Yes, sir, thank you. This is exhibit of the subject property. This is Polk Lane, running along the west side of the slide, and this is Kirk Road along the north side. We're in an industrialized area of the city, and the Planning Commission may recall back in November of 2021, you rezoned 216 acres that's shown here in blue, which is our M1 color, from AR to M1. And what's happened here is the same industrial developer working under the corporate name of Land Grant LLC has purchased two additional properties that are on each side of that 216 acres. There are 1.11 acre parcel 1, and I'll call it the 2, and that little 2.55 acre parcel 2. And so, the request that you have before you is to rezone those two parcels that they purchased and make them part of that larger piece of land. And then the next item on the agenda will be a multi-phase plan to subdivide that total 220 acres into three industrial lots and public rights away. So, little bit of a picture here of the broader area where we are. State Line Road up here to the north, again, this is Polk Lane, and Goodman Road down here to the south. Again, our parcel 1 is 1.11 acres, and we're on the south side of Kirk Road, about 760 feet to the east of Polk Lane. And right now, that property, and this just blows it up for you, that's just vacant wooded area. Parcel 2, again, a little bit over 2 and 1/2 acres in size, and we are at the north end of Eastern Drive, and we are several hundred feet to the north of DeSoto Road. That property is improved, according to the tax records, with a thousand-square-foot home that was built back in 1965. And if you kind of look at it prior to the industrialization of this area, a lot of these properties were being used for farming operations, and it appears that one is still being used in conjunction with a farm operation. These parcels were both annexed into the city effective in May of 2021. So if we go to our rezoning criteria, we've got our three. First is dealing with the original zoning classification, and is it a mistake? And if you go back to the original map that the county adopted for zoning, those parcels appear on that as AR, so clearly no mistake in the zoning. And then the next two deal with the character of the neighborhood and whether it's changed to justify the rezoning and whether a public need exists for the rezoning. So, this is one of those situations where you probably have a picture worth a thousand words. On the left-hand side, you see our 2006 aerial map. This is showing you about a 1.75 square mile area, and you can see our two subject properties in yellow. You can see we have five warehouse, big industrial buildings over here along the west side of Polk Lane, and next to that is the 2025 aerial map. You can see all these big white rooftops. The number of buildings in that 1.75 square mile area is increased by 11 up to 16, so clearly that's incontrovertible evidence that you've had changes to the character of the neighborhood. We have had a lot of, slowed a little bit in the past four or five years, but we have had substantial development of those warehouse distribution facilities during the past decade. We do have a limited supply of vacant land in the M1 Light Industrial zoning district, and approval here would add land within the area, and we do have adequate road and utility infrastructure to support industrial development. One of the key parts about this site is its proximity to Highway 302, as well as the highway system that you can reach from Highway 302. So it's very well situated from the perspective of an industrial developer. From the city's perspective, you can see this is our future land use map. You can see our two parcels are in a larger area that is designated on the future land use map for industrial distribution uses. So really, from that planning perspective, the use of warehouse distribution is the highest and best use of the property. And as we know, our industrial development in the city does provide job growth, it does expand our local tax base, and those are things that are both deemed to be meeting a public need. So, have given you a recommended motion, finding that the proposed rezoning meets the criteria and conforms to the Comprehensive Plan, to recommend that the board rezone the property from, properties from AR to the M1 District. That concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you. Any questions to staff? And I think we have someone here to represent the application, if you'll come forward, please.
Hi there, Emma Donnelly-Bullington, Kimley Horn and Associates, 6750 Poplar Avenue in Memphis. Y'all presented it really well, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions? No questions, then thank you. All right, open it for public hearing. Anyone here speak for or against this application? And I don't see anyone here, so we'll close the public hearing. I will now open it for any discussion or motions from the commissioners.
I make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Singer to approve the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Lewis. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the application is approved and approved. So our next one is, item seven is the application for the preliminary plat for Olive Branch Logistics Park, submitted by German Perrigoy, PE, Kimley Horn and Associates, on behalf of Land Grant LLC, Mark Bowden, property owner. The request is to subdivide 220.21 plus or minus acres into three industrial lots, rights away, and one common open space in several development phases. The subject property is The subject property is owned M1 Light Industrial District, including two parcel proposed for rezoning from AR under the previous agenda item, and is located on the south side of Kirk Road, approximately 760 feet east of Polk Lane.
Yes, sir. So, this is the depiction of the 220 acres that now includes the two parcels from the last item, and the proposal is to subdivide that 220 acres into three industrial lots, rights-of-way, and one common open space over three development phases. And we went over the location under the last item here, Highway 302, Polk Lane, Kirk Road, State Line Road. This just shows you, this is from your staff report, shows you a summary of the phasing plan, and so when I talk about phasing, I'm talking about the plating of lots and also the construction of, dedication of right-of-way and the construction of roads or widening of roads. So, Lot One is up here on the northwest corner of the three lots, and it is just under 68 acres in size, and Phase One would include the plating of that lot, and also the following improvements, widening out of Kirk Road, which includes the dedication of 40 additional feet of right-of-way, and then the construction of this north-south road. You can see South Crossroads Drive to the north, and this project proposes to continue that road southward, so it would be dedication of right-of-way with the first phase and construction of the road along that northern portion. Phase Two would include the plating of what's shown here as Lot Three, just under 87 acres. It would include the completion of the Kirk Road widening out with the 40-foot wide dedication over here to Forest Hill Irene Road, and then it would also include completion of South Crossroads Drive down here, so you would have a complete road system through the subject property with South Crossroads Drive, and also Kirk Road widened out with Phase Two. And then, the third phase is only the plating of the 53.52 acre Lot Three. And then, this next slide just shows you that, shown on the preliminary plat, again, with your phasing lines that I just discussed. As far as South Crossroads Drive, the right-of-way is 68 feet wide and includes two travel lanes and a 14-foot center turn lane. You widen that out a little bit because of the truck movement, and that includes curb gutter and sidewalks. And so, this would be for South Crossroads Drive, and would it also include the dedication of, or the same cross-section basically would be done in Kirk Road, but the right-of-way in that case is 80 feet wide. Now, there could be a potential need for deceleration or acceleration lanes that would be determined by our city engineer, who's also going to have to evaluate the need for other improvements. And one of the main items that we always deal with in Olive Branch and with these industrial parks is making sure that we're mitigating potential conflicts with additional truck traffic versus school traffic or traffic through neighborhoods. So, I'll go back to this previous slide and show you what's also proposed for the second phase, and this is not any type of roadway improvement, this would just simply be the dedication of right-of-way with the intent to eventually widen out Forest Hill Drive or build Forest Hill Drive through that section of the property. And then, we do have a common open space of about three acres over here that's in a floodway area that's pretty much undevelopable, and I'll go into that in a little more detail in talking about our Forest Hill Right-of-Way future dedication. So, this first slide shows you kind of a close-up of the area, and we asked for only 25 feet of right-of-way. This is our subject property, and we asked for only 25 feet of right-of-way in this area because you can see that Forest Hill Irene doesn't really line up with the property. So, when the property over here on the east side, which may be coming to you in the form of a PD amendment shortly, would develop, we would get additional right-of-way over here, and that would be at the point of potentially discussing the actual construction of Forest Hill Irene. As the right-of-way extends down the side of the property, when we get down to this part where you can see with these blue dash lines, this is the area showing the ditches that are out there and streams, and then it would cut over here and become a 50-foot wide right-of-way along the northern part of that ditch, and then again, this area over here would be a common open space that's undevelopable because it's in the floodway. So, show you a little bit about what we're trying to accomplish here with Forest Hill Irene, because again, we want to keep this as a separate road from the truck traffic. So, again, I just want to reiterate, you know, we're talking about, here's our subject property, and we're talking about this is Crossroads Drive, and that basically coming down to this point of the property. And then, this shows you a couple of exhibits from our comprehensive plan, and this shows you the future alignment of this Forest Hill Irene Road along the side of the subject property, and then this is a separate property through the center where some of these various ditches converge. And then, you may recall rezoning the property that's located kind of to the south of where this number 39 is. That was part of the Kirk Farms development that the Planning Commission just saw within the past year, and you've approved that for future development of 603 residential lots. So, the idea, and this, this alignment of Forest Hill Irene actually is the spine road through the center of that Kirk Farms development. So, you can see that'll be built as part of that development up to about that point. Again, there's a big property here in the center where those ditches converge, but this would dedicate, this project would dedicate right-of-way down here to about this point. So, the goal here would be to create a road where you could go from the residential area up here to the Center Hill Schools, which are located up here. And you can see on, this is a future land use map, again, from our comp plan, and you can see that whole Forest Hill Irene Road alignment is pretty much the separator, at least on the northern part, between what would be our industrial area that would be located over to the west of it, and the suburban residential or more the neighborhood areas that would be located to the east of it. So, again, the intent would be to eventually develop that road, not for truck traffic, but for residential traffic to get from the Center Hill Schools back down to the residential subdivisions here to the south. And this shows you a copy of the final plat. Again, I would point out your floodway area down here. You can see the dedication of the roadway here. You can see our right-of-way for Crossroads Drive for the industrial traffic, and then also the right-of-way that'll need to be dedicated for the widening of Kirk Road. It is recommended for approval, subject to the 10 conditions as noted. Most of those are standard, but I did want to talk a little bit about condition number four, and this just basically reiterates what would be done in the various phases as far as the public improvements go. Now, we want to make sure if they do decide to come to final plat with smaller lots, which is certainly possible, that we're kind of covering ourselves, so we're kind of making it clear here with this recommended condition, that upon Phase Two being completed, that that road would need to be extended, South Crossroads Drive all the way to the south part of the property, and that Kirk Road would be fully improved in that second phase, even if they do go with smaller lot configuration. As far as number five goes, we're talking about the Forest Hill Irene Right-of-Way. Again, we're not asking the developer to build any of that, we're just asking for right-of-way in the event that the road were to be built in the future. Now, that could change in the event, the unlikely event that they turned around and said, "Well, we want to access that Forest Hill Irene Road for industrial traffic." That would change that factor. And I didn't really talk too much about DeSoto Road earlier, but if you see, the subject property does go all the way down to DeSoto Road, so again, the same thing would apply here, provided that this developed a large industrial building and all of the access came from this Crossroads Drive, there'd be no reason for them to do anything on DeSoto Road. However, at some point, if they did decide that they wanted to access DeSoto Road, they could be subject to making some improvements out for DeSoto Road, even if it was something for just their, you know, employees to be able to come and use DeSoto Road, there may be some improvements that would be warranted, but it does appear there's adequate and sufficient right-of-way there to accommodate that. So, I'm happy to answer any questions with respect to any of the conditions, but otherwise, that concludes the staff presentation.
Any, any questions to staff? Any questions of the applicant? If not, then I will entertain any motions or comments or discussion from the commissioners.
Make a motion to recommend the Board of Alderman approve the preliminary plat, subject to conditions one through 10.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Jones to approve the application, subject to all the staff conditions one through 10. Do we have a second?
Second.
No. We have a second by Ms. Singer on that one. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And then, the motion carries and the application is approved. Thank you so much. Okay. Any other business? Nobody have any other business that I think?
No, sir.
We have a, we need to have a motion to adjourn, then.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Jones. Do we have a second? Do we have a second by Ms. Singer? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? And we are now adjourned.